I would like to call it order. The school board meeting at Upper Arlington Stroll for Tuesday, May the 9th, 2017. Mr. Geisberg, could you please call it all?
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Royer.
Here.
Ms. McClellan.
Here.
Ms. Dries.
Here.
Thank you. Now, if we could all please stand for the flag of allegiance. The flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, dear everyone. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
We do. First, do you have an amendment from you, or an addendum from you, excuse me, for C-1B, C-2A, and C-2F? And then, one change on page four. Under B, the reciting the resignation, the date should be effective 5/9/2017, not the 3rd of March.
That is on page four?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please, with the amendment.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the amendment and with the change on page 3B.
I'm second.
C-3B.
C-3B. I'll second that.
Ms. McClellan.
Yes.
Ms. Dries.
Yes.
Ms. Royer.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Comfort.
Aye, thank you. Next, I need the approval of the minutes for the April 20th, 2017, for the raised...
I'd like to interrupt, but I'd like to make a correction to the minutes. On page 18, the amendment should say, Ms. Royer, aye, and it says, Ms. Comfort, aye.
That's noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get changed, so we have the motion to do then the as minutes over just a minute, so we have a second then.
I'll second it, Mr. Dries. Second, and then the plan community.
Any more?
Any more, okay, next.
Ms. Royer.
Aye.
Ms. Dries.
Aye.
Ms. McClellan.
Aye.
Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Ms. Comfort.
Aye, approved, thank you very much. I'd now like to give Mr. Imhoff the opportunity to...
Great, good evening, everybody. We're excited tonight. We have a lot of recognition tonight, which is wonderful, and we are going to start by recognizing our board president, Robin Comfort. For 10 years of service, the Ohio School Boards Association had a regional event in March, and none of us were available to attend, including Robin, and so we decided we would rather do that here, and thank you, and recognize you here tonight. So with us from OSBA is Kim Miller-Smith. I'll invite Kim to come forward and make a few comments about Robin, and then I've got something else to say. Kim, thanks for being here.
You're welcome, thank you. Well, greetings from the Ohio School Boards Association, and thank you for allowing me to participate this evening. It is a pleasure to be with you. I think our board members know, but the Central Region is one of five OSBA regions, and we encompass 14 counties in the Central Region, in the Central Ohio area, and 103 public school districts. I also want to point out in your folders, you have some information about things that we are promoting right now. We are actively promoting involvement in Kids PAC. It's a political action committee committed to public education. We have region awards that Upper Arlington participates in quite often, and I wanted to make you aware of those. And there are applications for Student Achievement Fair as well. But tonight, I am here to recognize and the service of, and to present to Upper Arlington City Schools Board of Education member, Robin Comfort, her 10-year milestone service award on behalf of the Ohio School Boards Association. We thank Ms. Comfort for her service to public education and her work to promote students and families of the district. And Ms. Comfort, could you come forward, and I'll read your certificate for you? Says the distinguished board member. The Ohio School Boards Association recognizes Robin Comfort as a 10-year veteran board member and for continued dedication and commitment to public education as a school board member. And the certificate is signed by Richard Lewis, the executive director of the Ohio School Boards Association, and Denise Baba, the Ohio School Boards Association president. And Robin, we congratulate you.
Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to say, we want to thank all of our board members for your leadership
and your willingness to serve your school district and your community. It's because of efforts such as yours that we do enjoy strong public schools in Ohio. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I could have the whole board, if the whole board could come down and take a picture with Robin and Kim, that would be great, and if the board, when you're done with that, I'm going to have you stand over to the side, because we're going to have some more pictures this evening, so that'll keep you from running up and down, okay? Colleen, where would you like them? Right here. I know how much you all love pictures.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
You're very welcome.
That way we can tweet this out momentarily. Thanks a lot. And Robin, I also just want to say thank you on behalf of all of us who are part of the UA schools family. So it's an amazing sacrifice to be a member of the Board of Education, and to do it for 10 years is extraordinary. And we just want to thank you for all you've done for our schools and for our community. It just means a lot to us, so thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And you know, one of the reasons why I love being involved with the schools is just who all is here tonight. We have swimming and diving teams, state champions, we have musicians, we have master teachers, we've covered the gamut. It's pretty impressive. Thank you all for coming, and thank you for this honor, and thank you, Kim. Appreciate it very much.
Okay, great, and so if you'll all stay right there, I'm going to ask Senator Kuntzey to join me, I'm going to ask Mr. Theodot to join me, and Mrs. Comfort, and we are going to move forward with our recognition. So this time, I'm going to ask members of the all-state and regional orchestras to come forward, along with your teachers, and if you'll just line up right here in front. All-state and regional orchestras. And Ed, I believe you're the spokesperson tonight, so if you'd like to talk about this fine group, is that correct? You are the spokesperson?
Sure.
Okay.
First, Stephanie, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
You've been at so many of our performances, and I just, 10 years is remarkable, how to kind of dedicate to us, so thank you.
Well, thank you for your service. I saw your name, I saw what you've done, I heard after Pearl Harbor, I was like, incredible experience.
These folks are the ones that, in the fall audition, this is outside of our classroom, things that they worked on outside of the room, and they were selected from all over Central Ohio to be part of the all-region orchestra for South and for Region. They're approximately, it's all done online, so I don't know the exact number, but typically, they're somewhere in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 students that auditioned to be selected for this group. We were fortunate to have, and they're not all here tonight, some of them have sports that they do, and some of them have other things, family obligations, but we were so fortunate to have 13 of our high school students selected to be part of that ensemble. They get to perform concert in November with one weekend, they work up the music again outside of rehearsal time, and they show up on Friday night, and they basically are the Michigan game weekend, it's always Michigan weekend. They spend Friday, all day Saturday, Saturday night they get to go home, they work all day, all morning Sunday, and then get a concert Sunday afternoon. 110, I think, total musicians from the district, or I'm sorry, from Central Ohio, perform in this event, and the fact that we had 13 kids from Upper Arlington, I think speaks highly of them and their dedication to the craft. The concert was held, and Sunday afternoon was phenomenal. They worked with the professor of orchestra studies and band studies at Georgetown State University, and they got to do something that we typically don't do, or provide, or can provide for them, in a typical high school setting. So for those kids, it's an incredible experience. For me, as a director, they come back to the school, and they come back lit, and they come back excited, and they come back better people. And I'm just so thrilled that they were actually able to be here tonight.
We are pleased to have Senator Kuntzey with us tonight, here to recognize all of our members, and I just wanted to give you a chance just to say a couple of words.
I'm just going to say, what a pleasure it is to join you here tonight. I don't think you could have, I couldn't say it better than President Comfort did. What a wonderful opportunity to honor such a great school district and such a great community, and that really starts with our families, our students, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, and our board. Arlington's a great community, and again, you're shining tonight, and I'm happy to be here to help celebrate, so thank you for inviting me.
And now we'd like each of you to introduce yourselves nice and loudly for us, if you would. Public speaking, we all love it, don't we?
Hi, I'm Claire Schuler, and I play the cello.
Hi, I'm Nicole Holman, and I'm a senior and I play the cello.
I'm Sam Zunick, and I play the harp.
I'm Elin Holman, and I play violin.
I'm Anna McIntosh, and I play the cello.
And none of us would happen without the amazing teachers, so if you guys could introduce yourselves as well.
I'm Gretchen Zunick.
I'm Nora Calvert.
Melissa Allen.
Jordan King.
And if you're a parent of one of these fine students, if you could just stand, because they want to thank you. Go ahead, go on. And Representative Hughes just came in, so Jim, if you want to come on up, and then we're going to have the board come in and get a picture with you, and we're going to get that tweeted out, and then we're going to move on to the next group, so the board members will please come in, and Colleen will tell us, I think we're going to need to scrunch in a little bit, okay? Andrew, move in there, buddy. Sorry, we're doing this as we go, we just had a little meeting here. I would like to invite Avik to come forward, please. Are you here this evening? There we go. And Ed, do you want to talk about this wonderful accomplishments?
Avik, in my world, Avik is known as a violinist, but Avik, you started playing violin in 7th grade?
8th grade.
Well, no, I started when I was 7th.
Okay, you joined us when you was...
5th grader.
Okay. We really know Avik as a violinist, right? But his true love and passion is...
Piano.
Piano. And the cool thing about Avik, if you could, for the teachers in the room, if you could imagine a Venn diagram of classically trained musician and jazz musician, you end up with Avik, sweet spot right in the middle. He is an incredible asset to not only our, I believe, not only our program, but our school, our school district as well. He's able to merge all those things together, and if you don't know, as a sophomore, to win not only the Grandville, sorry, New Albany concerto competition, but also the Columbus Symphony competition for concerto is an amazing thing in one year. So, Avik, congratulations.
We're going to have you hold these, and we're going to jump in here and take a picture of you, and stand right here, we're going to put you right in the middle, buddy. Put you in the middle.
Good start.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, now I would like to invite all of the orchestra students who were a part of the trip to Pearl Harbor, if you would come forward. Thank you very much. Ed, is this still you?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
We, and first of all, thank you, thank you for being here. Truly, this is a really cool moment for me. We, we, I don't just mean the general we, which is me and Gretchen, but I mean the string staff, believe firmly that whatever a student chooses to do, whether it's a string instrument, vocal music, band instrument, track, swimming, diving, water polo, whatever it is, that could be a vehicle for them. And for some of our people, it's a scholarship to a school as a senior, for some of them, it's a chance to go to China. For us, this past year, it was us performing at the United Nations, which was an incredible honor. For us to go to the Violins of Hope exhibit, for those of you that don't know Violins of Hope, please take a moment and Google it. These are instruments that survived the Holocaust. There's an incredible book called The Violins of Hope, and that's kind of how this whole thing got started. We did a project a year ago called The Violins of Hope, in which we researched Holocaust musicians, we learned the stories of those instruments and the people that they were attached to. The instruments survived miraculously, and they're part of an exhibit that travels around the world, and if you are ever in the zip code or nearby, you need to experience that exhibit. We were fortunate to be not only part of that concert, and Paul, you went along with us, and Andrew, you went along with us, to experience the concert, to hear the music of those Holocaust composers played on Holocaust surviving instruments, and it was a very moving experience for us. That was followed up with the performance of the United Nations, of the dignitaries and so forth. It was their lunch break, but it was an incredible experience for us. The Pearl Harbor, I have to tell you, was an incredibly moving experience. If you've ever been to Pearl Harbor, imagine that but tied with 100 kids, and watching them drop the pedals at the memorial into the water, and then perform in front of the Mighty Home, I have to say, it was incredibly cool. These people sacrificed, by these people, I mean the people still at Pearl Harbor. The people behind me, we invested in those projects, and as a string teacher, as an educator, that's what excites me the most, is investing in the future. And that's what you have behind you and in front of you, your future.
Thank you. I wanted to give Representative Hughes a chance just to say hello. So Senator Kuntzey's already spoken, just wanted to give you a chance to say hello and tell our kids how great they are. I'm not coaching you, but...
I can use all the coaching I get. Well, first of all, good evening. And first of all, congratulations, what an experience, and thank you for all your dedication in terms of, I'm very fortunate to have a teacher, especially as a school board, as well as a superintendent, very passionate about education. And as many of you know, my mother, who I lost last year, was an educator, she was an English teacher, and I trusted her a lot on that, plus both my grandparents were superintendents of schools, you know that long-term.
What does that do?
So education is very dear to my heart and to my family. And you know, we talked about the orchestra, I played the drums, I played the timpani, you know, when I was, in terms of doing that, so I have a little bit, towards what you said. But as I was mentioning to Senator Kuntzey, what an experience you can tell your children about being over at Pearl Harbor, because I haven't been there, neither have she, you have something that, something you can tell your children and other friends and neighbors about that. But I just want to really, as an Honorable resident, just want to say how much we are very proud of what you're doing, and as has been said before, you're our future, and when we look at, from the state of Ohio perspective, in terms of children like this, kids, I should say, as well as students out here and all this, we have a very bright future, and we're very blessed to have it, so I can just say thank you for what you're doing to make all of us proud.
Thank you, Subay. We're going to start on this side, so how about, yeah, we'll start with Zoe. Name, grade, and instrument, how's that, Zoe?
Good. My name is Zoe Menupian, I'm a senior, and I play the violin.
My name is Sam Ubinasso, I'm a freshman, and I play the violin.
My name is Louis Menupian, I'm a freshman, and I play the violin.
My name's Isabel Zeltz, I'm a senior, and I play violin.
My name's Elijah Voorhees, I'm a sophomore, and I play the cello.
My name is Diana, I'm a freshman, and I play violin.
My name is Yina Gold, I'm a junior, I play the violin.
My name is Nick Sabriano, I play bass, I'm a junior.
My name's Caitlin Fettle, and I'm a freshman, and I play the violin.
My name's Claire Schuler, I'm a junior, and I play the cello.
My name's Everwell, I'm a junior, and I play the cello.
My name's Susan, I'm a freshman, and I play the harp.
My name's Maggie McKinney, I'm a freshman, and I play the cello.
My name's Hayden Long, I'm a freshman, and I play the viola.
My name's Hannah DePrydus, I'm a sophomore, and I play the viola.
I'm Izzy Peterson, I'm a sophomore, and I play the viola.
I'm Jimmy Ferreira, I'm a sophomore, and I play the bass.
I'm Daniel Keen, I'm a sophomore, and I play the cello.
I'm Alex Goldman, I'm a freshman, and I play the viola.
I'm Michael Riston, I'm a freshman, I play the cello.
I'm Nicole Holman, I'm a senior, and I play the cello.
I'm Elin Holman, I'm a sophomore, and I play violin.
Great, another round of applause. And if you're a family member of one of these amazing students, if you could please stand so we can thank you too. You know what time it is, it's picture time, right? So we're going to scooch in here, if the board members would come in as well. So did you hear Mrs. Zunick, we want to do a front row, kind of kneel down a little bit? That's great, that's great. So we're going to look over this way towards Mrs. Wright. Yeah, we're looking right over there. I'd like to invite our girls' swimming and diving team, the third consecutive state title, if you would come forward. You guys know the drill, right? Dan, you want to tell us about the season?
Sure. I usually have to follow somebody who's articulated his head, so, but I've been up here a few times with a few different groups now, and this group was extremely special in the sense that it took a very gritty performance in February in order to bring home the state title. The, I've, you know, heard the definition of luck, and the moment when preparation meets opportunity, and that really sums up this year's championship season. These young ladies were presented with opportunity, and they did everything that was necessary over the course of the year to be prepared when that opportunity was available to them. And that's the message I want to make sure that they understand and that the community understands, is they work extremely hard, and because of that, when the opportunity was there, they were able to seize that moment and win a state title. We just saw Ed speak about the orchestra, you know, as a community, we're blessed, and I just want to make sure that we never forget that these amazing accomplishments that these young people give us, they come with a lot of amazing sacrifice and amazing hard work, and that's something that I think we need to really get out to the, to our community as a whole. These accomplishments don't come easy, whether it's orchestra or swimming or other sports or organizations, we are blessed with a young group of, a young population that works extremely hard, and you know, that's a special thing to be part of.
Yes, it is. You know, and I want you to know, just because you're here all the time for state titles, I don't want you to think that we take this for granted for a minute, and I don't want you to think for a minute that we think what you do is easy. It is incredibly difficult, and I think doing it year after year after year is even more difficult, because we know everyone is gunning for you all the time, so we could not be more proud of you and your coaching staff. You represent us so well, you just need to know that. We would love for you to introduce yourselves, and then, you are the best group we have here all year at posing for pictures. I mean, you guys are great at that, so we're going to do that, and you'll be shocked at how quickly they can do that. So we'll start right down here.
I'm Anna Fisher, and I'm a senior.
I'm Anna Lindell, and I'm a senior.
I'm Molly Derber, and I'm a senior.
I'm Katie McKensy, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Kendra Sheehan, and I'm a junior.
My name's Katie Trace, and I'm a soc, senior.
I'm Mary Reardon, and I'm a freshman.
I'm Hannah Caldwell, and I'm a junior.
I'm Grace McCarthy, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Emily Reardon, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Dakota Elliott, I'm a junior.
I'm Alicia Howard, I'm a freshman.
I'm Heidi Hendershaw, and I'm a freshman.
Great, let's give them a hand. And then they want a chance to thank all of their family members who are here, so if you're here as a family member tonight, you can stand. Okay, time for the photo, you know what to do, don't let me down, okay? There we go, great. Guys, come on in, please. Thanks again.
Next up, we are thrilled to recognize our master teachers this year. So I'd like them to come forward. I know a couple couldn't join us. But the Master Teacher Distinction is an award given by the Ohio Department of Education to teachers who show and are recognized for exemplary leadership, strong professional development and personal growth, and just exemplary relationships with their students. So it is truly an honor tonight to recognize our group that are here. So Laura Moore from the high school, Mark Bash from the high school, Josh Clemmons is here from our middle school. And unable to join us tonight are Erin McGuire, Dave Griffin, and Nate Palmer. But we are just so thrilled to recognize you for your incredible accomplishments. And the award from the State Department is very similar to National Board Certification Rigor and one that is highly distinguished in the state of Ohio. So congratulations.
Okay, we're going to move you over here in the middle for a picture after you shake everyone's hand. We're going to put you guys right in the middle and then we'll form up around you, okay? It won't be as photogenic as last. Well, you know, it's hard to talk, right? Okay. Andrew and Robin are dancing there, so. Congratulations. Thank you. I just wanted to let the board know while, while Jim is here and with us, I don't want to miss this opportunity. We have been working as a school district for years for what we call the Fair Funding Amendment, which would ensure that every public school receives at least the same amount of funding on a per-student basis as our private and faith-based schools in the state of Ohio. Currently, we, we receive about half the funding as the private schools and we think that's a ridiculous notion. So Jim has been a champion for that in the Senate and now in the House. And recently, the House passed its version of the budget that did not include the Fair Funding Amendment. And Jim was only one of a few members of his party that voted against the budget because he wanted to do what was right for us as a community. And I just wanted you, as the board members, to know that he stood up for us and did something that was very difficult. And I just wanted to thank you publicly for doing that. It means a lot to us.
Thank you.
Yes. It is.
Wish me better luck.
And now Stephanie is going to take up the cause in the Senate for us, right? Great. Thank you very much. Thank you. You know, and we're not done. We have more things. I, I do have to pause for just a second, though, and it's just, you know, we can never take this for granted. The number of kids who are here tonight and just a sampling of the great things that are going on in the school district and what they do and their parents do and our staff does, it's really an amazing place. And I hope we never get used to this. I know we won't, but it's a very special place. So as if that's not enough, we have some more good, good news here. Here, here, you see a picture to 11 high school computer science students who competed in the Seabus Hackathon. Of these three teams, one took third place, another won Best Presentation as well as Hacker's Choice Award from their peers. All of these students won $30,000 scholarships to study computer science at Franklin University. And Andy told them to stay away from our financial software. Right here. Yes, that's what I said. Am I right? Yeah, it said all of these students won $30,000 scholarships to study computer science at Franklin University. Correct. Yes. This is a slide of our Changemakers Leadership Summit. Great work by our students who attended the Growing Together Service Learning Network's Changemakers Leadership Summit at the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. These third and fourth graders shared about Barrington's new school-wide service learning project, Barrington Packs. And so obviously very, very proud of these students. Moving on to Jones Service Learning. Jones' sixth-grade students collected and delivered more than 1,100 pounds of non-perishable food items to donate to Heart-to-Hart Food Pantry as part of their culminating service learning project for the 2016-2017 school year. These students also grew edible plants from seed to donate, helped sort and shell the items, and wrote messages of hope and encouragement for families who visit the food pantry. So thank you so much to our sixth graders at Jones. Now let me drive, are you? Okay. This is a part of our Metro Parks partnership. And this was in the UA News just last week. Students in our high school Spanish IV honors class partnered with Columbus and Franklin County Metro Parks for a service learning project aimed at sharing environmentally friendly choices and strategies in both English and Spanish. The students created a series of informational videos instructing Metro Parks visitors and temporary facility tenants on how to protect the parks. Thanks to those students. Our Arbor Day Tree Planning, thanks to our friends at the City of Upper Arlington and Upper Arlington Parks and Rec, including our very own Mayor Debbie Johnson, who continued the annual tradition of planting a tree at Burbank for Arbor Day. This has been going on for more than 20 years. So this was an exciting day for our kids. Hoops for a Cure is, is an annual event. Hastings versus Jones staff in basketball. And this year, I think Jason Leff, I believe this was a Jones year. I think Jones won this year. But Hoops for a Cure raised $10,000 this year for the Stephanie's Feeling Fund, bringing the total over the past 10 years to $85,000. So it was a great night and just thank you to all of our staff and all of our students who attended. This just happened at Jones and I actually saw this just, just last night. Thanks to a generous Upper Arlington Education Foundation grant, graffiti artist Giovanni Santiago and his team created this mural just this last week at Jones, celebrating our city and our schools' upcoming centennial. The piece of art is going to tour the city this summer before being auctioned at the bash in, in September. And that is currently in Jones. And it looks even better in person. But this was a great experience for the kids because they were with the artist and his team throughout the day. So they got to see that creative process and just, just really thrilled. Obviously with the foundation for supporting it, but also with the art department at Jones for making this happen. Just last week was Staff Appreciation Week. And it's a week that we celebrated our staff and we celebrate our staff all the time, but we really spent extra time last week thanking them. They do amazing things for our students and our entire community each and every day. This is a picture at Windermere. Students and staff celebrated one very special member of their family, Miss Francie, known as their lunch lady, for National School Lunch Hero Day. Students in grades three to five have been studying the Lunch Lady series of books by, by Jared Pross, I don't under, I don't, I can't pronounce the last name. We'll say by Jared K. about a crime-fighting cafeteria lady and it even Skyped for the author, thanks to Windermere PTO. They, they, they prepared lots of art, songs, videos, and more for Miss Francie, and they surprised her on Friday. I will tell you as an aside, if you don't know Miss Francie, it's worth the stop at Windermere just to get an amazing hug. And at times, Andy, cover your ears, a free cookie. But she is an amazing person and does a great job there and the kids just adore her. And then finally, I want to welcome our new Director of Academic Affairs, Andy Hatton. And Andy, you'd stand up. Actually, why don't you come up with me for a second? I told you I was going to do this, didn't I? Yeah, exactly. Andy is coming to us from, from the Dublin City Schools where he's currently the Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Innovation. He served as a principal and, and an assistant principal for about 10 years. Has been a central office administrator for the last three and has over 20 years in education. He started when he was 14. So, but we are incredibly excited to have Andy join our team. And you just want to take a second and say, and say hello? Great. This is your first test, right?
Yes. I'm actually thrilled to be here. I've heard nothing but great things about this community and I have some wonderful connections in the community already. Some family members, some former colleagues and some current colleagues. And I've been thoroughly impressed with, at every turn with Upper Arlington schools. So I just cannot wait to get started. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thanks, Andy. And you passed the test. Good job. Good job. I want to thank the team members who are also a part of the interview process. And I'll tell you, we had a lot of interest in this position. Applicants in the neighborhood of 50. And we interviewed 11. And so Andy, Andy quickly rose to the top and we're just thrilled he's joining us. Mr. Gaisfeld?
Before you continue on your roll, can we just jump back to what I mentioned?
Anything you want.
It is just the public participation.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. I'm going to move forward now, correct? No, is there anyone here from the associations? Do I need to take a break, Andy? I'm not looking at the agenda. Okay. I can move on? Okay. Thank you. So we're going to move on with our facilities master planning initial findings review. Just to, just to recap, as you know, we, we formed the Financial Advisory Board in January and they met in January and February. And they looked at our operating needs and also at our facility needs. And at the end of February, they issued an initial findings that Andy and I shared, shared with you at your March meeting. Then during the months of March and April, they received feedback from, from our community, which I'm going to share with you in a moment. And then just a couple of weeks ago, they actually went, went, went through that feedback. And they are prepared tonight to issue their final recommendations to you. But, but before we do that, we're going to walk through what the initial findings were again, just to put us all on the same page. Andy, do you want to talk about this? Pardon, or you want me to just go? Okay, I'm just going to go then. Okay. First of all, they, they recommended an operating levy in the amount of 3.75 mils. Again, as a reminder, this is a brand-new additional permanent levy on top of, of what we already pay. This would be the lowest request in more than three decades. Also, as a reminder, the, the money we, we receive from voted levies does not increase as property values increase. As property values go up, the tax rate goes down. So we receive the same amount of money from our voted levies, which is why we need a brand-new additional permanent levy every three to four years. They also recommended that we implement the master plan in two phases, with the first phase being the high school and all five of the elementary schools. And the second phase in about a decade would be both middle schools and Burbank. These were the, this was the rationale for the two-phase implementation. Obviously, the high school was in the first phase just because the physical needs of the high school are, are immediate. They actually looked at postponing the elementary schools for five or six years and determined that that would not be a wise choice for the three reasons you see there, that, that construction costs are typically always going up. They felt like the borrowing rates were likely to increase, even though no one can, can predict that. They felt that was likely. And also, if we delay construction of the elementary schools, it's likely that we're going to have to add trailers at the elementary school, which is, which is an added expense and certainly not an optimal environment for our kids. We also asked them to look at the location of the high school. We asked them to look at both the Zollinger Road option and the Brandon Road option. And they are recommending, and they, and, excuse me, in, in their initial findings, they actually found that the Zollinger Road option was the better option. And to just cut to the chase on that, really the overriding reason for that was safety. Putting a large high school on a narrow, one, on, on, on a narrow one-way street, just what the Brandon Road option would do, we did not feel that that would, would be safe. Chris actually talked to Upper Arlington Police and Fire. They also agreed with that. You want a major high school on a major street so there's maximum access for first responders in case of an emergency. We also looked at a number of athletic issues. We, we thought it'd be a great idea to put turf fields at Jones and Hastings. The Financial Advisory Board did not agree with that. We thought it would be good to spend money on our current central office because it, it, it needs some work. That's on the next slide. They did not agree with that. They, they did agree that we need to add baseball and softball diamonds at Tremont. And we also talked to them about putting a turf field behind Tremont. And you'll hear their final recommendation on that in just a moment. We also looked at pursuing a reduction in our estimates of about $23 million. And they agreed with that. And that's a process we will go through with the Board of Education and our community during the design process. I, I already mentioned to you about the central office repairs. They felt it made more sense at our central office to sell that building and then to relocate it into one of the projects that we're doing somewhere else in the district. They also thought it was a good idea to have a privately funded alumni room at the high school. And we had asked them to look at a welcome center in the district and we determined that we did not need that because we'd already put one in place at Graff. And so we took that off the table. We had them talk about the possibility of raising dollars privately. And they thought it was a good idea to set a target of at least $5 million in private dollars. And so, and so at the end of the day, in the, in, in the initial findings, we would have a bond issue which would, which would require additional mileage of 5.175 mils. And that combined with the operating levy of 3.75 would be a total of 8.92 mils. And you see the costs there. And those assume an, an average 5% interest rate and level payments over 38 years. And that's based on our current values in 2017. So then we moved into the feedback process. So they issued all of those findings and then we took all of these different types of feedback. And I want you to know that through this process, again, Karen and Colleen did a wonderful job. But we had 2,390 total responses among these five data points, which is great. And we had been keeping track of our points of contact throughout the process over the last two, uh, uh, two-plus years. And we're at approximately 8,200 points of contact at this point and growing. And so we're very proud of that.
What was the number you just mentioned that gave about 2,300?
So, so, so counting all of these data points and all of the people who, who responded to these different surveys, we had 2,390 people weigh in.
That was just in March and April.
That was just in March and April. Yeah. So the, so the community's dialed in. So I wanted to talk to you, one of those data points was another survey from Fallon Research. We invited Paul Fallon to be here this evening. He is out of town. And so I'm going to present some of these results for you. I will not do the job that Paul would, but I'm going to do my best. Always start here. This was a survey that was conducted with 302 randomly selected registered voters. There is a plus or minus 5.63% margin of error. And that means on any of the numbers I am about to give you, that they could be 5.63% higher or 5.63% lower. Okay? And this was conducted April 10th through 14th. And it includes cell phones and voice over I, I, IP because fewer and fewer residents have a landline. I think over 40% now only have cell phones. And so you have to include all of those different types of people. So this was our first, first question. And we asked people how much news they have heard about our plans. And we are at 71% informed awareness right there. Among our parents, you see we're at 87%, 62% among non-parents, 83% of, of, of all people. Those are, those are amazing numbers. And I will tell you again, I will give the credit to Karen and to Colleen. That is over two, two years of work. That, that, that just takes time to get to that level of awareness because of all the things going on in our world. And so we were very pleased with that. So we asked people, generally speaking, if they support or, or oppose our plans. And you see that the support number is 79%. There are 12% against and 9% unsure. You can see among parents, we're at 86%. Among non-parents, that's 76%. And some of the other groups listed there as well. Again, these are, these are astounding numbers. And we were very, very pleased with that. But I'm always point, I'm always quick to point out, and Paul would tell you, this is a, this is a number before people have a price tag too. Okay? So you have to ask about the price too. And we're going to do that in just a minute. Nancy, you have a question?
Sure. Parents, is it parents that have children in the school and out of the school or just in the school?
So parents are, Karen, help, help me here. Parents are, parents who currently have kids in school. And the all parents are also people who are going to have kids in school.
Right. And then non-parents could be included, the number of people who actually have children that are out or at school.
Yeah. That's a good distinction. You are a, you are a non-parent, yes. But you, you are, you, you are a parent. But for the sake of this, yes, you are a non-parent. That's sad, isn't it? I am almost a non-parent and I'm very sad about that, so. I am almost a non-parent, and I'm very sad about that, so. So then, on this slide, and it is difficult to see, and I'm sorry, I'm going to read this to you from my slide, because I want to make sure that you get this. This is one I want to just spend a couple of minutes on. Excuse me, so... What we did is we asked about a number of questions and how important these things were. So is it a good idea or a bad idea? And the first one here was ensure the schools are large enough so we don't need trailers. 85% of the people think that is a good idea, so you can see how the community feels about trailers. Expand the elementary schools so they are big enough to handle our growing enrollment. 82% think that is a good idea. This question asked two different ways. It asks if it's a good idea to delay the middle schools in Burbank for 10 years. And this is interesting. So the 78% basically agree that it's a good idea to delay to meet the urgent needs at the high school and the elementary schools. But down here, we asked if it was a good idea to delay just to save money, and only 58% agree with that. So you can see, in that question, our community was driven more by the need as opposed to the money. And then down here, is it a good idea to build a turf field behind Tremont? We had 56%. And then construct a new high school building, 52%. What I would note there, obviously, is all of those are above 50%, which is, again, something I'm not used to seeing in these surveys. So incredible support in the community. And then we decided to hone in a little bit more about the high school. And you know, we've had the Brandon Road option and the Zollinger Road option. So we asked this question two different ways. And this first question, and you can see the wording there, we basically asked it with these are two options, and one is costs more than the other. And when we asked it in that fashion, 57% wanted the cheaper option and 24% wanted the more expensive option. So then the next question, we asked that same thing differently, and we asked if it was more important for the new high school to cost less to build to minimize the increased burden on taxpayers, or meet more needs, such as better traffic flow, easier access for first responders, and ability to possibly expand in the future. And when we asked it in that way, it really flipped, and 57% of the people wanted us to meet more needs as opposed to doing what costs less. And so those are important data points, and we'll show you the other data points from our community surveys in a moment. So in this question, what we did is we basically put the numbers to this. So you know, we had almost 80% who were generally supportive, but that was without a price tag. And so what this question did was actually put a price tag on it. And you see, our number was still 58% for and 29% against, which is still very high. The caveat here is we actually wrote the question in this way, and we didn't simulate the actual ballot language, which is obviously much, much longer. And so Paul Fallon just wanted you just to recognize that we did not simulate the actual ballot language, but obviously, still, those are very high results before a campaign has even begun. I would tell you, I'm going to go back. One of the things that we also asked in this question, if we broke it down, let me tell you to look at that line right there. You see what that says? These are people who typically vote in a November election in and off year. So when we just look at those folks, the number goes from 58 to 50, okay? So that is also important to note, and Paul wanted to point that out. But again, among our parents, we're at 63%. So then, these are our different data points from all the online surveys and the surveys people filled out at our community meetings and from our facilities task force. You can see, this is question one about the operating levy, overwhelming support for the 3.75 mil operating levy. Question two about phasing, meaning doing the high school and the elementaries first and then waiting about a decade for the middle schools and Hastings and Burbank, again, overwhelming support for those ideas. Question three was the high school. So this is Zollinger Road option versus Brandon. So again, overwhelming support here for Zollinger Road. People generally will agree with raising private dollars to lessen their tax burden. We thought they would agree with that. This is the notion of the transitional space at Tremont. See the numbers there? Still, all well over 50%. And this is the question about the combined levy, and this is when you put a price tag to all of it. So at this point, I'm going to invite Andy Livingston to come forward. He is an executive vice president with Huntington Bank, a great friend of the school district and has dedicated a lot of time to the financial advisory board and has agreed to be the spokesperson for that board. And he wants to share with you what the final recommendations are from the financial advisory board. And I just want to thank Andy for all he's done for our school in this matter and over the years. So Andy, thanks a lot for being here.
Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity. As Paul said, I've been involved with the financial advisory board, as have nine other members, and I've also been included in the financial advisory consulting team for over 10 years for the school system. So I find it very much a privilege and an honor to be on this committee and also to be in front of you this evening. I just wanted to remind you a little bit about the financial advisory board. It consisted of 10 members, and we have one of those in addition who's got my back tonight, which is Richard, so thank you very much. Appreciate Richard being here. Always nice to have some support when you make some recommendations such as these. We had five meetings. I think they were extremely detailed. They were collaborative. We had the needed resources that we requested to make decisions and to really ferret out information and different examples. We also had the experts were available to us to provide the data and the input. I believe that we asked tough questions, and we got great answers and information back. And I'd really like to compliment Paul, Andy, Chris, and Karen for giving us that information. We had times where we took a different slant, and at the next meeting, they would rerun scenarios to make sure that we had different situations in mind and we had the information to act upon. So I think that we should be very, very pleased with the staff that we had to work with, the experts that we had in front of us, and also the commitment of those individuals to help in this. We understand the task at hand, and it was a large one. We understood that our recommendations would affect the school system for the next 50 years. So we took this extremely seriously. Paul mentioned a number of the financial advisory board's final report, but we are recommending a two-phase implementation. You heard Paul state the high school and the elementary schools. We also believe that the Zollinger Road option for the high school is best for first responders, for parking, and also, very importantly, for the expansion of this facility if it should be needed at some point down the road. We also looked at the installation of a district-funded turf field behind Tremont. We originally thought that there was an opportunity to share in this expense with the city of Upper Arlington, but upon further review and information, the committee decided that because the district could use that facility and that turf, the vast majority of the time that we think it should be used and funded by the district through the levy. We also thought and reviewed the costs and looked at just very high-level costs and thought that we could take $23 million in scope reductions. But I want you to please understand that detailed cost reductions will be further vetted during the design phase. So with that, we also thought that no bond money for the current central office. Paul touched on the fact that we think it should be researched for the potential sale and relocation of that office. We also believe that the private funding of the alumni room at the high school, we could also agree with that, and that could be something that would want to be put forward. And we also thought that a minimum of $5 million with regards to a private campaign to fund the overall expenses could be a target that we would agree to as well. That would be a minimum target. So we recommend a 3.75 mil operating levy. Paul touched on it. I'll echo on it again. The lowest in 35 years. And I think this speaks extremely well for the fiscal responsibility and expense management of the district. I don't think many can undertake a cost-reduction program like the management and individuals have to bring that through, and I think that really needs to be stated throughout the information if you act on this. The recommendation, we need, I think, be extremely diligent in letting our fellow community members understand that. We also recommend a 5.17 mil bond issue for the high school and the elementary school, either renovation or construction. So I'd really like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity, and we hope you act favorably on our recommendations. Thank you.
Any questions for Andy before I let him sit down there?
I just want to thank you, Andy. Matt and I had the opportunity to work with you and to serve the financial advisory board and attend you really getting into the depths of what this really means for our district and going forward for 50 years. And I can't tell you what a great learning experience it was for myself to see you guys at work and to really dive into the details and look at every opportunity that we have to make a difference for our students. And I really appreciate your time and your efforts and your talents that you put into looking at our upcoming bond and levy and for these new schools.
Thank you, Nancy. You're very, very welcome.
I think I just wanted to add real quick to the fellow, to other boards and members that were able to participate. Obviously, we couldn't create a meeting, a public meeting. But there's been a lot of, I've set up a lot of meetings, not through the school, but through other agencies where the committee was kind of there to put a stamp on things and final approval. I want to back up what Andy said a little bit, because this was, these were all working meetings, and really did request more information, asked tough questions. They asked Andy to come out with different number scenarios, and they really helped the numbers that are up there on the operating levy and the capital levy. They really helped form that for our community, and that was a big deal. So, Andy, thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
I want to also say, sorry.
No problem.
I just want to say that we set up the process and all these different phases, and you came in and agreed to serve, which, not knowing what kind of process it would be, whether we would be the planners or the foreplanners. And I hope that we respected your time. I know that you have given us, taken some of our ideas that maybe weren't as well-informed as people with your experience could come up with. And so I really appreciate how you made this a much better plan for our students and our school moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all say thank you, thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, thanks. Thanks, Richard. So now, we come to the end of this journey, really, which is this three-phase over-two-year process that we launched at our first annual State of the Schools event in February of 2015. And you've all spent a lot of time on this process. I just, again, want to thank Karen and Colleen. We would not be here without them, and they have just worked tirelessly on this. Chris Potts, I can't even begin to count the hours he's spent. How many coffees now, buddy, have you done?
We're at 86, 87.
We're at 86 or 87. You know, a little more than a year ago, Chris and I stood before you and said, "We're going to do 100 coffees in a year." And right now, we are scheduled to have 98 done by the end of May. So we're going to have one at Chris's house and one at my house. And get to 100, I think. So, no small undertaking, but I think what's impressed Chris and I the most is how many members of our community have wanted to come out and engage in that process, right? And be a part of those dialogues and ask those questions. I think, I know, speaking for Chris, we both feel blessed to serve in a community where people want to be a part of this dialogue, they want to ask good questions. And I'll tell you, all those meetings really informed the process throughout, because you all were constantly willing to adjust the process to respond to the needs and to the desires of the community, and we don't take that for granted. And so, just a few comments I wanted to make as we're moving through this. And so, I love technology, but as Karen and Colleen know, I'm a little old-school when it comes to these reports, so you have a little binder in front of you just to put all of that together. And so, I'm going to be recommending to you tonight that you take action to approve the final pieces of the master plan. And these are those final pieces. I'm going to recommend that you approve the Zollinger Road option for the high school. I'm going to recommend that you approve the installation of a turf field behind Tremont and softball and baseball diamonds behind Tremont. All that would be district-funded. And I'm also going to recommend that we don't spend any bond money on the current central office, but we explore selling that site and including a central office into one of our other projects. So that's what I'm going to be recommending to you. So the updated master plan looks like this. So you see, the total cost, including the athletic fields at Tremont, comes to a little under $312 million. Andy would want me to say again and again and again, these are preliminary cost estimates based on first quarter $2019. Did I get that right, Andy?
You said that well.
Okay, great. Thank you. And so the first phase of that master plan would come in at $230 million. And you see how we get to that? You add up all of the items that would be in the first phase, you subtract the private funding target, you subtract our target for the scope reductions, and you come down to a Phase 1 total project cost of $230 million. Any questions on any of that?
Have you done an earnest in any way for the private fundraising? Where do we stand?
Yes, so we have started that. We have just started the planning for that, I should say. So I think you all know that Joni Duggar has been working part-time for the Education Foundation, and she texted me in the middle of the night about two weeks ago, and her and Glenn had discussed this and felt like she should dedicate her time to this effort. And so she has volunteered on behalf of the Education Foundation to run point, along with us in the school district, on raising these dollars. It's important to her, it's important to Glenn, and they really want to be a part in leaving a legacy in the community. And so, we'll be working with Joni, and she'll be running point on that for us. And we're going to be bringing in expertise from our community and from outside of the community as well, because obviously, this will be the largest fundraising project in the history of our school district, I believe, Andy. Is that correct? Correct? Private funding? I don't know about the city of Upper Arlington, but this will be the largest private fundraising in the history of our school district. So we're really thankful that Joni and Glenn, because when you get Joni, you get Glenn, right? Have been willing to step up and really be a part of this. That was a good night when I got, that's a text message you don't mind getting in the middle of the night, right? Great people willing to step up. So, Andy, do you want to talk about?
So to this, while since you just presented kind of your updates for master plan.
Yes.
Can we have a motion then to accept Paul's updates so we can finalize the master plan?
You want to do that right, and then the quarter runs through the rest of the slides?
The rest of the slides don't include the master plan.
Oh, that is true. Oh, that is true.
Yeah.
So I will absolutely make a motion to approve the master plan's presentancy.
One second.
Thank you, Nancy.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mr. Royer?
Hi.
Mrs. Treese?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so first, let me, I'd be remiss if I didn't turn around and say thank you to Andy and Richard also. I will tell you, when I called them about, probably about six months ago, they weren't quite sure what they were volunteering for, and there was no pushback, along with the other eight members. They wanted to do what they could to help the community out, and once they kind of stood the process, as Andy mentioned and as Paul mentioned, it was some very rich discussion. And I don't take that for granted, so, I guess I just want to publicly thank them too and thank them for their time and the great discussion we had. So that said, let me piggyback off of then the financial part that Andy talked about, and that is what we are recommending, or what I am recommending, we are recommending here as administration to you, an operating levy in November of 3.75 mils and a bond issue for collection of 5.17 mils. Total millage of 8.92 mils, per $100,000 of house value, $312. Overall property tax increase compared to this year of 14% with these constraints. Once again, realizing that we're assuming that the 5.17 mils would be at, assuming we can issue the debt at a 5% average interest rate, 38 years, and with the caveat that the property values don't decrease from where they are today, which we have not seen that in the last forever here, so. So it's also a good time to mention to you, and we'll have more discussion about this over time, is that ballot language is determined by the county auditor. Ballot language is calculated by Ohio Vice Code. Typically, what happens then is districts, based on how they're able to structure the debt, will collect less than what the ballot millage says. Okay? And it's a very common structure. This just happened in Hilliard last November. Ballot millage comes out, but the district says they will collect less than that. So we'll have more conversation on that. So I will be recommending then that the district collects no more than 5.17 mils to pay off this debt with, once again, those three caveats, that 5% average interest rate, no more than 38, or assuming it's 38-year lifespan for the debt, and there is no decrease in property taxes. So with that, I'm not asking you for a motion or acceptance right now. You will have the opportunity to do that on June 6th at our next board meeting. At June 6th, assuming that we're all on the same page, we'll ask you to approve a resolution that takes the 3.75 mils and then the $230 million bond issue. We'll ask you to approve a resolution that then allows me to take it to the county as the first step of putting a ballot on in November. After that, the county will give me some information back, and I will bring more information to you at the June 28th meeting, which is where we have to have our second resolution that says we will proceed with that. Once you pass that resolution, then I will take that information down to the board elections, and we will file for the November 7th election day. You know, it's pretty amazing to think about, I remember Paul coming and really us all discussing this two-and-a-half-year process, and we're all thinking, boy, two-and-a-half years from now, I mean, we've got plenty of time, and before you know it, I mean, it's November 17th, so it's exciting. It's scary how fast it went, but we're all excited about it. We're excited to kind of move on and really impact the community. So it's been a great process, and we will take the next step then on June 6th, as you have a month to kind of ponder that as we go through our process. Questions on this before we move on?
I just have one question. We'll have the opportunity to talk about the ballot language in another setting.
Really, I mean, the ballot language, I mean, the ballot language is normal template, basically. Okay, so we'll just, I mean, it'll say 3.75 operating levy, and it'll say a $230 million bond issue. Okay? So we'll get to working out ahead of time, but that's fairly common. So assuming nothing changes in your thoughts after these presentations and discussions, we'll go ahead and look for approval on June 6th.
All right.
Okay?
Okay.
Good question. And then, once again, once we do the first resolution, June 6th, you're just telling me to go talk to the county auditor and get some information. So it's not until that second vote until it's actually finalized. So as more discussion occurs, even given that time that can occur.
Okay.
The one nice thing that I'll tell you is typically, when it comes to levies, you're always doing this in August timeframe, early July and August timeframe. It's been nice because we've had the two-and-a-half-year process, we've had such great open dialogue, which is not typical when it comes to bond packages or operating levies. So this has been nice that we've actually had a lot more discussion than normal early on, and gotten the feedback from the community a lot sooner than we would have. So this process has really allowed us for that, which puts us in much better shape to continue this timeframe. Okay? So now, let's talk where we are after 10 months financially for the district. Okay? You will see that we are 1.6% better than we projected revenue-wise, or $1.4 million on the five-year forecast. Why is that, again? Over $1 million of that difference is tax revenue. As I mentioned last month, our tax revenue is up $1 million from where I had projected. Our projections are based on five-year averages, so we're assuming delinquency is an average of five years, and we're assuming when you get a tax bill, you can pay a portion in, basically, with December that we get in January, and you can pay a portion then in May that we usually get in June or July. Or you can pay it all upfront. So as the economy's gotten better, it appears that we are collecting, people are paying quicker than the five-year average. But we don't know for sure how that plays out until we get our second collection, which will be in July and August timeframe. So right now, we're ahead of $1 million. It could mean we've gotten, we're ahead of $1 million now, and we might be behind $1 million at our second collection next fiscal year. So we'll have to see how that plays out before we make any kind of revisions. If you would ask me right now, I would say it's both. Delinquency is down, and people are probably paying over one time period versus two time periods. So we'll kind of play it out as it comes. The other revenue, it has increased also. You can see in your financials that obviously our interest income is higher than projected. We've had a good year so far on investment income. Our rental income has really grown as we've had some large groups rent out our spaces. And lastly, we receive payment from the city for TIF payments, taxing rental financing. Last year, we got those payments in April and May. This year, we got them in March, so therefore, we're just ahead of the game. So next month, you will see we're much closer on that part of the TIF payment from where we forecasted. Expenditure-wise, we are 1.1% better than we anticipated also. $759,000. A large portion of that is purchase services, about $400,000. Purchase services is really, it's tracking better for two reasons. Well, several reasons, but two of the larger reasons, utilities overall are tracking better than we expected. Why is that? Think about the winter we experienced. There was, A, it was much warmer than you, I mean, or than we were expecting. So therefore, our gas bills, et cetera, was down. But I will also say, because the consortium we are in, our electrical bills and also our natural gas bills are much better than we anticipated. The other reason for that is we expected to make a payment for the district's fiber-optic network, which is with the city. We expect to make that payment in January. We actually made that payment just last week. So next month, you'll see a decrease in that variance also. But overall, we feel really good of where we are, and we'll talk about that in a second when we get to the five-year forecast. So the other part of this is, and Paul mentioned, a thank you to Karen and Colleen. I've got to thank, and if she's still, Colleen has been huge for me in particular of helping us release our second annual financial update. But as you remember, last year, as part of our strategic plan, we issued our first one. This is our second iteration, and Colleen, we wouldn't have gotten to know that without her. So Colleen, thank you very much, or thank you wherever you are. Thank you very much. I do appreciate it. I want to go over a couple items with that. You will see, and I'm not looking for you to actually be to read this, but I just kind of want to show a couple pages for you. As part of this annual financial report, we have a page on state revenue, and the very first graph there, that yellow bar is how much we get per pupil. That black bar is what the private, or parochial schools get per pupil, kind of making Paul's comment when he's talking about Representative Hughes and that fair funding. So you can see we're at about half, or actually a little bit less than half of what the parochials would get. We also have a chart talking about expenditures and how expenditures break down percentage-wise for last, this is all based on last year's numbers. We have a page on here, and this is interesting, too. I would suggest you kind of look at this as you hear conversation about how we're spending our permanent improvement levy that was passed back in 2007. You can see here with the four buckets, and you can see, as you would expect, that the majority of that money has been spent on permanent improvements to our buildings. So when it comes to the addition to Barrington, the addition to Tremont, and the addition to Greensview, along with our typical roofing and those types of things. And then, we spent a portion on our technology and textbooks, which has led us to our one-to-one, which has helped us pay for some of that one-to-one regarding the secondary. And then finally, you know, we've talked a lot about this during the last two-and-a-half years through the master planning process, but enrollment. We all know that enrollment's increasing. This is, once again, shows some graphs of what the projections look like as of November of where we are heading the next 10 years. So hopefully, you find that report as just another way to look at finances, or try to do it as another way to be transparent. I think sometimes when you look at financial information, it is all just numbers and just almost like Excel spreadsheets. This, we try to put some graphs in there to really show what we've been working on and some of the key things that are going on. The three other items I want to bring to your attention that are on the agenda tonight is, it is May, so we are asking you to reapprove the five-year forecast and the related assumptions. Paul asked me to do a two-hour presentation on the five-year forecast. I told him two minutes was fine tonight, so, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm not going to take your direction on that one.
Maybe next time.
But in all seriousness, you approved the five-year forecast back in March. We will not make any changes to that, so I'll ask you to reapprove that so I can file that with the ODE probably next week. Also, you will see that there are a couple contracts on our agenda for the parochial schools, like for, I think it's one of the St. Andrews or St. Agatha, one of those two. As a reminder, we are required to be fiscal agents for the state money they get. So ODE gives us the money, and we basically make those payments for the auxiliary services. That money, if that money doesn't happen, those contracts don't happen. So that is not our taxpayer collections. Well, it is really taxpayer, it goes to the state, but not ones we're collecting for our operating. So that's why you're approving those tonight. And lastly, is we have in there the 2017-18 fee structure. That includes the high school course fees, that includes the instructional fees for the middle school, or for the middle school and elementary, and also includes the athletic fees. I will tell you that there are no changes to the athletic fees, no changes to the elementary and middle school, very little change to the instructional at the high school courses. There are a couple of new courses, so therefore, there's some fees added on to those, and we've combined some of those fees where the instructional fee includes a workbook, just so it's one price versus having to go buy a workbook and then also pay for some supplies being used. Questions on those? Otherwise, we'll approve those as we do annually, and then we'll include those also when it comes to next year as we, as parents start paying those bills.
Any questions?
All right.
Ron, I have one other quick announcement. We were notified today that we've been selected to present the Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference on our facilities' payment process in November. And so, we'll do that specific date of our session. So, we're excited about that.
That's very exciting. And I would just like to make one comment before we go ahead with the vote. You know, when I was introduced to Andy Hatton tonight, I said to him, "Welcome to the team," and I meant that with all sincerity because this administrative team functions as a real team, as a real community, and we all benefit. I think the hours are countless that have been invested by Paul, by Chris, by Andy, by Colleen, by Karen, you know, just Kathy, just every single person has stepped up, and it is a full-court trust now. And the board members who served on the FAD committee, the board members who were involved with the finances, the board members involved with the building, it's outstanding, but it's reflective of the leadership that we have. So I think the entire board joins me in thanking Paul and thanking everyone for, you know, two and a half years of working hard to bring our schools to the place we need to be, to, so that our facilities reflect the instruction and everything can join together, and our students can just continue to soar and excel. So, thank you. And welcome, and the team. So now, we are ready to take a vote, and this is on the議会.
It's on the consent agenda.
Oh, consent agenda, okay. We're doing the consent agenda.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended on three, I'm sorry, item C3B and with the adenda.
One second. Thank you.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mrs. Treese?
Hi.
Mrs. Royer?
Hi.
Mrs. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Gump?
Hi. Approved. Thank you. We've concluded the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Mrs. Moore?
Hi.
Mrs. Royer?
Hi.
Mr. McClellan?
Yes.
Mrs. Treese?
Hi.
Mrs. Gump?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.